All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Planning Commission of June 25, 2025. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items: 1.1 Special Permit 25019, Item 1.2 Special Permit 25020, and Item 5.1 Special Permit 1123D. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 11, 2025.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Epstein.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryan Menyose?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
We will now proceed with today's agenda. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will now ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item 1.1 Special Permit 25019 for the Messman ADU for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit with a waiver on property generally located at 19400 Southwest 72nd Street. This is final action. Item 1.2 Special Permit 25020 to allow for the expansion of an existing non-standard dwelling for the addition of a garage to be located within the required five-foot side yard setback on property generally located at 2480 Lake Street, and this is also final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
No.
If there is anyone here wishing to speak on these consent agenda items, please stand and state that item.
Okay.
See none, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryan Menyose?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as a part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided, and the clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes has expired, and once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Item 4.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 25005 to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln-Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Capital Improvement Program to amend the downtown Central Library project with an updated location of 1111 O Street and revised funding sources and timing. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of the site to be disclosed?
No.
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff, 555 South 10th Street. I'm going to speak really briefly on the CIP document amendment, then I will hand it off to Ryan Weber, our Libraries Director, to talk about the project. So this is an amendment to the Central Library Project in the CIP. It's been in the CIP for many years now. It is a six-year CIP, and we've been planning ahead for a while. There's a couple main things being amended with this proposal. The first is that we have identified now an actual location for that library. Previously, we didn't say where it was going to be. Now we say 1111 O Street, known as the Education Square Building. The other piece is updating our funding amounts and sources. The previous, and I guess I should say current, CIP project shows $70 million, primarily funded by general obligation bonds. With this amendment, the total project cost would be $46.2 million, funded with a mix of municipal improvement bonds, general revenues, and private contributions. One thing I want to point out is that at one point in the staff report, it says municipal infrastructure bonds. That's not the language we use or terms we use in Lincoln, so the CIP will say municipal improvement bonds. With that, I think I'll hand it over to Ryan to talk about the project, and then we can both be available for questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ryan Weber, Director, Lincoln City Libraries, 136 South 14th Street. I have read through the staff report, and the Planning Department did a great job of putting together a very comprehensive review of what we're considering today, and I did a great job. And I'm not going to go into all of the detail, but I want to give a little bit of context of how we got here today and then where we're going in the near future. I do have a slide. Ah, yes, there we go. This is 1111 O Street, also known as Education Square, or if you're a longtime Lincolnite, the Centrum Building. And I've gotten in the habit of, during the last several months, of referring to it as the Centrum. There will not, I can tell you this, there will not be an Orange Julius coming into the space to partner with the library, but we certainly heard that over the last couple of months quite a bit. So officially, this project was put into the CIP way back in 2006, so almost 20 years ago, but even longer than that, we've been trying to find a solution for replacement of the Central Library. We're extremely pleased with where we've landed today, and how we got there was, for many years, the library was targeted to be placed at the Pershing site, officially as part of the redevelopment agreement Phase 3 on that site. That would have been the southwest corner. And we've been planning for many years on how to make that happen. Originally, it was going to be a 100,000-square-foot building, and then, over the course of the last five to seven years, it was reduced down to an 80,000-square-foot facility. Nearly two years ago, in the fall of 2023, we did a series of community engagement sessions where we went around the community, held over 30 sessions, heard feedback input from our residents, and decided at that point to take another look at how we plan for the location and the size and scope of the library facility. It was at that point when we reduced the size down to 65,000 square feet, and then shortly after that, we started to think outside the box. Maybe Pershing site isn't the future site or the best site for our new library. And we first took a look at what could we do at Bennett Martin at that current site at 136 South 14th, and working with our architects, we're working with BVH locally and MSR Design nationally, they put together a cost estimate of about $57 million if we wanted to renovate or basically gut that building and start from scratch at that current site. Our whole goal in this was to find the best solution, but also reduce costs and make sure that we're providing amenities in a space appropriate for a future library. And we decided at that point that probably Bennett Martin wasn't the site. The next step was then to start looking, and low and behold, we were approached by SEC with the idea of that Education Square Building as being a potential future library site. So when that came on the market late last fall, we then, that started wheels in motion for planning for that site. So there was, after 20 years, all of a sudden, the right confluence of factors that led into where we're at today. Why is this site great? It's in a facility that's been well-maintained over the years and has great potential as a public space to continue on as a public library. What you're looking at, this is not a drone that the library sent up to take a photo of. It's from Google, it's a little bit blurry, but this shows you this 80,000-square-foot facility. We're looking to the south, and the incredible parking garage that's attached to it, it's a city garage, has 1,057 stalls, safe, dedicated parking that will be available for the library. We won't need 1,057 stalls, but there's plenty there for our future patrons. This is, we're looking at the corner of 12th and O towards the southwest. This is that building with brick facade removed, glass added, and a rooftop auditorium. Our library program is still based on 65,000 square feet, plus in that additional approximately 4,000-square-foot rooftop auditorium. This is just a sectional. We're looking from the south to the north, and you can see the two floors plus that rooftop addition. You can see here how open the space will be. We're taking advantage of the natural or already created design of the former Centrum Building, and then with the addition of that third-floor auditorium, just how open it will be, but this will provide the space requirements we need for all of our collections, our programming areas. We're going to have the appropriate amount of small group study and conference and meeting spaces for our patrons and for community use. So I could show you a lot of other images. Perhaps you've already seen some, they're available on our website, but I want to give you an idea of where we're heading next. We made the announcement of the library project a month ago, in mid-May. We're involved with community engagement right now. We had an opening session at Bennett Martin on June 4, well-attended. And then our next one is tomorrow night at Walt Branch Library. We'll have architects present, our library board members and staff to answer questions, take feedback. And then our last session will be on Monday, July 7, at the Centrum Building at 6:30 PM. And then City Council action will take place on the issuance of the municipal improvement bonds, the ratification of the purchase agreement, and adjusting the CIP as well in July, that's July 28 of next month. And then internal demo would begin in spring with the project well underway for two and a half years with an opening in spring of 2028. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Structurally, could you add an additional floor to the existing building in the future if you needed more space?
Yeah, I'm not an architect or an engineer, but our architects have told us that the building was designed to be added on upwards originally, but that testing is currently taking place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Where are you? Are you under contract? Are there contingencies on this building?
Explain what you mean by contingencies.
Well...
We have a purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement.
Yeah, there's been an executive order signed by the mayor for this at this point to be ratified next month by City Council.
Okay, and if that falls through, it nullifies the contract or...?
It potentially would, but we're fully confident that there's nothing to be concerned about.
Additional questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Are you expanding your programming space or to other things other than... There's so many things a public library can provide, and this is going to be our biggest central hub of a library. And you look at libraries nationwide, and they're doing so much more than just books anymore. So I just wondered, what type of programming space do you envision inside that besides meeting space and books?
Great question. So we plan a makerspace or a creative-type lab where we'll have 3D printing and cricket machines and the ability to use our digital software to create music, to scan photographs, convert photos and films to digital content. We'll have a recording studio attached to our Poly Music Library. Our local history hub, which is newer downtown at Bennett Martin, will be expanded, more prominent alongside the Poly Music Library and our Heritage Room for Nebraska Authors. All of that will be in one convenient area on the second floor. We envision a teaching kitchen to highlight or to complement classes and our collection on food and cookbooks.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any thoughts of putting solar panels up on the top roof?
I haven't heard that yet, but we're very eager to make sure that the building is energy-efficient and that, you know, when we move over there, we see cost savings with our utilities and our staffing, and I think that between now and when we have that final design ready to go, I think we'll see a lot of improvements that take into account creating a building that is green and designed for the future.
Additional questions at this time? Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we will take testimony. Applicant kind of spoke, right? As part of the, because it's part of the comprehensive plan conformance. So now we will do testimony in support of this application.
Commission Chair Yost and Commissioners, I'm Carl Eskridge. I'm speaking in behalf of the revised Central Library Project. It's good to be back in a familiar place. Served as City Council Representative for Central and Northwest Lincoln between 2011 and 2019. Downtown Lincoln is part of my district or was part of my district. And so about two months after I started on council, we broke ground for the West Haymarket. And two years later, when the arena was completed, then Pershing was closed, and we've been wondering what to do with Pershing kind of ever since. There were a couple of different rounds where proposals were made for the use of that property. One of those proposals included a library, and I happened to serve on that committee that reviewed the proposals, and the idea was that the Pershing site would potentially go on the tax roll. So a library was not a use that was considered strongly, I think, by the administration at that time. None of the proposals were accepted, and so it sat for a while and then went through a second round a few years later. And then the proposal that is going forth now, a mixed-use development with residential and office and potentially a library on a quarter of it, as Ryan explained, was approved, and that construction is happening today. Ryan explained a lot of the problems that have happened on that site, different sites, potentially rebuilding at the current Bennett Martin site. None of these things happened, and costs kept increasing, and we were really on hold until this out-of-the-blue announcement that the Southeast Community College was vacating downtown, consolidating all of their, or most of their operations at 88th and O Street. And the city was approached about the possibility of this being the location for a new Central Library. Hadn't really thought about that when this came forward. I think it was probably a complete surprise to most everybody, but in looking at the space, walking through the space, thought, yeah, this absolutely can work. You can, it doesn't take a whole lot of imagination, which I don't always have, to see how that could happen. And, you know, I mean, it was an educational space, make in a library, you could do that. So it was exciting, and then when the proposal came about what the exterior would look like, that looks like a new building, a great new building. So looking at this proposal, it's a 50-year building, reuse of a 50-year building that looks like a new building. It's sustainable, it's less costly, it's quicker to build, it fills the need for a long-term occupant in downtown Lincoln. It's check, check, check all those boxes. The building's already connected to Skywalks, which need a little help these days, and also it has a parking garage, not only for cars but also bicycles. Check, check, those boxes. Walking through the building, you imagine how it could be a library and interior uses and all of those things that a new library needs. This will happen in that space, and then that fresh, new exterior, essentially a new building in downtown Lincoln that will be there for years and years plus. A coffee shop. We need a new coffee shop, don't we? All of those things, and I think it's a possibility, maybe a reality, that there will be an auditorium and a rooftop space. In short, this proposal is simply perfect. Tells us that good things come for those who wait. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Dan Sloan, 405 South 28th Street. I'm here both on behalf of the library board as well as a local businessperson. I own the mill, coffee and tea. So we're, I mean, we're rooted in downtown and very, very excited about the project. I think Ryan and Carl have kind of extolled the virtues of this thing. I've been on the library board for seven years. The person who recruited me for the board was going off after seven years. We've been working on this project for a very, very long time, and as Carl alluded, this did kind of come out of left field, and it really shook up a lot of our preconceived ideas, but once we got into it, it really does check all of the boxes. I think in addition to all of the things that those two have brought up, I think that part of downtown really needs a shot in the arm. It's a pretty, pretty underutilized area of downtown right now, and I think the library will be a tremendous driver down there. I think there's great things going on down there with the new hotels and things like that, but this will really, really be a great amenity. As a businessperson, we hear a lot about parking. I personally think if you don't have a parking problem, you're not busy enough, but having a parking garage right next to the library is going to be a huge benefit. The board, library board unanimously approved this project and is very enthusiastic about it. We've all been working on it a long time, and we're all very excited about it, so want to assure you that there's really solid support at the board. I was at the first open house that we had, and I just talked to lots and lots of people through my normal daily life, and I don't know that I've had anybody who isn't excited about it with a couple of rare exceptions, and it's not the project that they're kicking about, it's other things. You know, why not this instead of that, that sort of thing. And, you know, we'd love to do it all, but we can't. We have to pick our priorities, and I think that after striving to replace Bennett Martin for 22 years, maybe it's time that it's our turn. In summary, it is a great project, and it's great for downtown. I think libraries, like schools, like our police force and our fire force, I think it says a tremendous amount about how we believe in our city. It's a huge attraction for talent, for retaining talent, for attracting talent. Lincoln's a great place to raise a family, and I think this will just up that ante a good bit. Thank you.
Questions? All right, thank you. Additional testimony and support?
I'm Leslie Huerta. My address is 130 South 13th Street. A little nervous, I've never spoken to this illustrious group before, so bear with me, but I'm really pleased to be here to support this project. Libraries are a personal, just an important part of my growing up in my childhood. I didn't grow up here, but we moved every couple of years, and the idea of finding a library was really magical, and that's not a quaint idea. I see it every day. I own the little bookstore around the corner from Bennett Martin, so I see all the traffic that's coming and going. We participate in a lot of things that we can to support Bennett Martin, and one of them is the summer reading program. So I see those little kids come in with their little coupons, and they get to have a book, so it really makes a difference. Along with parents and teachers and librarians, it instills an incredible sense of wonder and education and exploration, all that great stuff. On a selfish point, because I am a business around the corner, I want more foot traffic. I mean, we're located by all those office buildings that kind of went virtual during COVID, and we've survived and we've thrived, and we've done really well, and as Dan said, that part of downtown is a little bit lacking, so the idea of having this beautiful new building that's attracting more people is really appealing to us. I have to think that the people that are involved with the convention center and courting the new airlines, you know, they expect to have a bustling city center, and I think that that would be a great contribution to that effort. So every great city deserves a great library. Lincoln is a great city. I'm happy to be here, and I'm really looking forward to this project. Thank you.
Additional testimony and support of this application. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify in a neutral capacity or anyone who wishes Or anyone who wishes to testify in opposition? All right, does anyone have additional questions for staff? Are you ready to close the public hearing?
You're going to ask the applicant?
Well, does the applicant have anything additional you would like as a rebuttal to any of the testimony?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yos?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I'd move that we approve Comprehensive Planning Conformance 25005.
Second, Joy.
Discussion?
This is a great opportunity. I mean, it's something that has taken 20 years to come together, but it's a building that I think's been very underused. And the renovation of the building will add a freshness to that part of downtown, as well as more people in that area. So, I'd be very supportive of this.
So Centrum, went there shopping, then SCC, I went to college there. I am really excited to go to the library there. And to see Bennett Martin finally take shape in a new location. The accessibility at Bennett Martin is a tad bit of a struggle, and the elevator scares the bejebers out of me over there. So, I'm really excited, I'm so excited that there's parking nearby. Accessible parking downtown is always a struggle. So, just yes, 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 like Mr. Eskridge said, checks all the boxes. Yeah.
Yeah, it feels really good to know that we are still able to build such an excellent facility, given the timing, especially from a funding perspective. You know, there's pressures all over, and to be able to find a space that we like, that gives us the programming, gives us the facility at a lower cost, you can't beat it, right? So, I appreciate it, and we'll definitely be supporting it.
Additional... Well, I just want to say a few things, because it's very awesome to be able to be voting on this and recommending it to the City Council. I remember when Dick Cavett had the fundraiser, I believe that was '12, right? Wasn't it, 2012? And it was just fun to see how the last 20 years have played out and how we've all grown up around the Centrum, as we've gone to school. So, thank you for keeping it going, keeping it moving forward, and then also taking in all the input from the public. And this is a real big step from an affordability standpoint, so really nicely done.
Yeah, I feel like I grew up in the Bethany Library, the branch. The Dewey Decimal System was ingrained in my head. And I've just been so pleased to see how the libraries have evolved to take on just technology, music, so much more than what I had to offer, offered to me. And so, yeah, I think this is a great, great addition to our city, and I applaud you for being fiscally responsible and figuring out the best purpose and waiting until that came along.
I kept trying to think of a question to ask. And was just so excited about this coming before the body today, but I also feel like I don't want to pass up the opportunity to talk about the importance of libraries. And I really think you can tell a lot about a place by the kinds of public amenities that are offered. And so, we've gotten in the habit of taking our kids to public libraries when we travel, to check them out, see what they're like. And in the last few months, I've been both in new downtown libraries in Melbourne and Halifax that were incredible infill projects, you know, coming into a downtown that was existing, but creating a new, modern space. And I am thrilled to see this happen. I really think it's going to be an incredible opportunity, and I echo my fellow commissioners about the fiscal responsibility piece, but also the big dreams. And I just think what it's going to do for our community and for our families is really, really exciting, and I cannot wait, so. I will also be in support.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yos?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Okay, next item is Item 5.1, which is Continue Public Hearing in Action for Special Permit 1123D, Amending the Existing Special Permit, Allowing a Temporary Shelter for the Homeless to Increase the Special Permit Area for a New 69,000-Square-Foot Edition on Property Currently Located at 100 and 154 P Street. This is final action. Are there any expedited communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expedited communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon, Ben Culligan with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. I'll give a brief overview, just as a reminder of this project. But this was the request to amend the special permit for the People's City Mission. Specifically, the block outlined is the current special permit boundary, and then this would add the block to the south of Q Street into special permit with their updated site plan. So, this was the site plan shown two weeks ago. And... And as we discussed with the applicant on the condition, so there was an original condition that with the approval, that they would modify the shown loading dock area and then the mid-block crossing to the satisfaction of LTU. Once this was deferred, so we did meet with applicant with Clark Anderson and LTU together to come to an agreement, and where they have updated where to this plan, which LTU was in favor. So they did get rid of the angled parking, just as that was a safety hazard with it, going right out into the intersection with turning cars. So this would be at a 90-degree angle off First Street, and then share one larger entrance to the site that would have a gate. And then, they did agree with that to remove that mid-block crossing, so patrons can cross either on the east or west side of that block. With that, so you should have received the memo with the updated condition 1.4. And that basically is just saying, the resubmit, that they'll update their existing site plan to match this concept layout.
Questions?
Comment?
Yeah.
I just want to thank you all for getting together and coming up with this, because it just simplifies the whole thing.
All right, thank you very much. Applicant, testimony from the applicant.
Tim Gergen, 1010 Lincoln Mall. I apologize for the gruff voice and the non-Hawaiian shirt that Pastor Tom always provides. Like Ben has said, I apologize for that. That was a last-minute miscue that at their last planning commission we caught. We knew we could work this out with LTU. Thank you for the two-week delay. We both are happy with the loading dock and happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone here who wishes to testify on this application in support, in a neutral capacity, or anyone who wishes to testify in opposition? Okay.
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yos?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve Special Permit 1123D.
Second, Joy.
Discussion?
As I said before, I think that you've come up with a great solution, and it just eliminates any of the questions and concerns I think we had previously. And Tim, nice new haircut.
Additional discussion?
I'll just say, since I wasn't here two weeks ago, that this is an exciting project that we continue to need. It's a sad need, but a much-needed need that is present very predominantly in my area of the woods. So, I'm just excited to see it move forward with everybody on board.
Yeah, I would just add, I appreciate the partnership with the applicant and the Planning Department to figure out how to most protect the safety of the people who will be using the service. And really happy to see a low-barrier shelter become a reality in our community, because it is desperately needed. And so appreciate everyone working together to see that come to fruition.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yos?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so.
Seeing none, I would move that we adjourn.
Second, Joy.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yos?
Yes.
We are adjourned.